Well, good afternoon all. Good afternoon all. Welcome to the June 27th, 2024 meeting of the City of Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. The zoning board of adjustment holds public hearings to consider the strict application of the zoning ordinance for hardship variances, special uses, and appeals. I'm Mike Galliard, Vice Chair of the Davenport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Members present today are from your left to right, Bridget Boyd Carlson, myself, Angela Loback, no, excuse me, Jeff Blumker, and Dan Darland is participating virtually. Good afternoon, Dan. And staff present is Laura Berkeley, Matt Werdurich, and Attorney Dick Davidson. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off as it may interfere with the room's electronics. As we conduct our business, we expect that everyone here will conduct themselves in a respectful, courteous, and civil manner, and will speak only after being recognized by the Chair. The only exception to this standard is that the staff is expected to interject when necessary to ensure we are properly conducting our business. If anyone wishes to speak on a particular agenda item, you will be provided an opportunity to do so. When recognized by me, please step to the podium, introduce yourself, and provide your input. By practice, each person is only permitted one opportunity to speak. Exceptions to that practice is at my discretion. Of course, if a board member asks a question of anyone, they will be permitted to speak to answer that question. But I'll ask that you keep your response limited to the specific question. First order of business, any corrections to the minutes from our last meeting? I don't think we have any. May I have a motion for approval?
Motion to... Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. You still with us, Dan?
Yeah, I had to change the mic.
No worries. Okay, our first item of business is actually under old business. It is a request HV 24-08 of Kerry Panazzo, I hope that's correct, on behalf of OGAD Properties LLC at 3170 East 53rd Street, for hardship variance to construct a multi-tenant freestanding sign at the same access point and within 36 feet of an existing multi-tenant sign. Section 17.12.060.0D.4.A allows one sign per street frontage and one per access point if at least 75 feet apart from any other multi-tenant signs. May I have the staff report, please?
Yes, so the slide in front of you shows the area of the subject property, and the associated businesses are in yellow. So this is the northeast corner of Elmore Avenue and 53rd Street. So you have the Starbucks, AT&amp;T multi-tenant building at the corner with Noodles &amp; Company building just to the north. The T-Mobile lot is along 53rd with the petitioner's subject property just to the north of that. And then to the east of the site, you have the DXL and Enterprise office space. The white labels on this map indicate the location of existing signs. So the DXL Enterprise office has a freestanding sign along 53rd Street just to the east of that driveway, which is a write-in only. The red star indicates the location that the petitioner is hoping to place a sign. Then further along, as you move west on 53rd Street, you have the T-Mobile freestanding sign, a multi-tenant sign at the intersection of Elmore Avenue and 53rd, and then you have a multi-tenant sign for a former Diamond business. So this hardship variance request is to decrease the separation distance between multi-tenant signs from 75 feet down to 36 feet. The proposed sign would be located on the west side of the 53rd Street entrance driveway. A hardship variance is needed because there is already a multi-tenant sign on the east side of this access driveway. The sign advertises the DXL and Enterprise businesses. So multi-tenant centers are permitted one freestanding multi-tenant sign per frontage of a lot, and an additional sign is provided for each additional access point, a minimum of 75 feet from any other access point, and that's measured along the street frontage. For the purposes of this regulation, a multi-tenant development, where the development as a whole is comprised of separate lots of record, the entire development, including outlot parcels and inline development, is considered one zoning lot. So the zoning ordinance defines zoning lot as "a lot or combination of lots within a single block which is designated by its owner or the developer to be used, developed, or built upon as a unit. A zoning lot may coincide with a lot of record or may be comprised of one or more lots of record." So this is the zoning lot located at the subject property. There are only two access drives to the zoning lot, and each access point already has a multi-tenant sign. Additional multi-tenant signs are only allowed with at least 75 feet buffer between signs as measured along the street frontage between those signs. This slide shows the existing signage that qualifies as multi-tenant signage. So you have the existing Diamond Center sign along the Elmore Avenue entrance. You have the multi-tenant sign at the corner of Elmore Avenue and 53rd, displaying Starbucks, Noodles, AT&amp;T, Charles Schwab, and then you have the DXL Enterprise sign on 53rd. The subject property is located on a flag lot, so this diagram shows a simple concept of a flag lot example. The Davenport zoning code defines a flag lot as "a lot planted so that the main building site area, the flag, is set back from the street on which it fronts and includes an access strip, the pole, connecting the main building site with the street." So here is the planted subject property, which is actually a double flag, as it has access points to both Elmore Avenue as well as 53rd Street. Flag lots have a buildable portion of the lot off of and not visible from the public street. Once developed, it is highly likely a front building will block the view of any rear lot building. To accommodate such situations in commercial areas when developed as a zoning lot, the code allows for a multi-tenant sign along the public street. The applicant would legally be allowed to go on a multi-tenant sign along the 53rd Street. For this case, the applicant would be able to co-locate an existing 53rd Street multi-tenant sign, such as the DXL/Enterprise sign, with owner permission. So this is the applicant submitted site plan. The location of the sign is not shown other than two measurements, so five feet from the west lot line and 10 feet north of the utility easement. The board should note that the base of the sign is not just one point, but rather it has two dimensions for the rectangular base. Staff drew up a dimension site plan for the applicant to review. The applicant stated it was accurate and that there is two feet from the base of the sign to the curb, so that the sign would meet landscaping requirements for a two-foot landscape buffer around the base of the sign. This aerial photo shows the site location without the proposed sign. And even then, with the sign base superimposed on the plan, along with the landscape buffer area, these are approximately to scale for reference. The red highlighted area is one of four street views photos showing where the proposed sign would approximately be located. The area is also approximately to scale. So this is as you travel west on 53rd. So again, the red highlighted area is where the sign is proposed, approximately, as we get closer to the entrance. So staff sent out notification letters to 10 property owners within 200 feet of the subject property. To date, one comment has been received, and that has been included in the packet for today's meeting. So the comment came from the property owner of the T-Mobile store. So I will read that for you. "So I am the owner of the commercial building located at 3150 East 53rd Street, which is currently leased to T-Mobile. I received the public hearing notification about the request on behalf of OGAD Properties. For hardship variance, the above-mentioned request to construct the multi-tenant freestanding sign at the access point will be extremely detrimental to my property. The sign, if constructed, will decrease the visibility of my tenant signage from the main road, which will result in adverse effect on their business. The signage will make my property less desirable for future leasing and negatively impact the value of my property. I therefore oppose this request." So with that, our findings, the petitioner has not demonstrated practical difficulties or particularly hardship associated with this property, nor justification for an additional multi-tenant sign. Approval standard number one, the application of the ordinance does not create a hardship. Standard two, physical and topographical conditions do not limit the use of the site. Standard three, unique circumstance is not established. And finally, standard four, protection of essential character is not established. The request is a convenience to the applicant, as other viable alternatives exist. So with that, staff recommends denial of the request.
Any questions from the board to staff? I do have one, Matt. Could you go back to the slide that shows where the new sign proposed is imposed on to... And where the other one is? So in the packet, it says that distance between the proposed sign and the existing DXL sign is 36 feet. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I do have a question. So going west would be to my left, right?
It would be yes, the left side of the screen.
This greenish thing over here is the current DXL sign?
Correct.
So if you're driving west, wouldn't this proposed new sign be covered by them?
So they are proposing a taller sign. So it would be approximately 25 feet in height. So you'd see at least some of it over the DXL sign.
Okay, I see.
Do you have any questions, Dan, for staff?
Yeah, I just want them to reiterate, if I heard right, they could, with permission of the sign owner, add their name to the DXL Enterprise sign?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know if they spoke to the owner of that sign about being added? I don't quite understand. I assume they read part of the sign or something from the owner of the sign.
It's the representative of the petitioner's here, so they might be best to answer that question.
Okay, if there are no other questions, Representative or the applicant, would you please step forward and present your case, your request? Just to be reminded, the microphone is directly above the podium, so that's the best place to speak from.
Absolutely, thank you very much. My name is Charles Owen, and I'm here representing OGAD Enterprises when it comes to the sign and for the hardship approval. As mentioned, the sign, worried about DXL blocking the sign. The bottom of the sign, where any advertisement for the business is going in, is looking to be 11 feet, 11 feet, 11 and 3/4 feet, excuse me, above the ground level. This is also on a slight incline, so the sign is going to be well above the height for DXL and Enterprise sign to be blocking that. As well as the letter from the owner of the building at T-Mobile stating that it's going to be detrimental to blocking his sign. I do have a series of pictures walking down that sidewalk and video. When the T-Mobile sign comes into view, which can't be seen from this picture, they are well past the proposed sign where that location is. So the new signage is not going to block the signage of the T-Mobile store or any other buildings there, according to where their sign is currently located. The big thing here is going to be the hardship. This building has been there for several years and has several significant failed businesses that have tried to be in there. And reaching out to those previous businesses, to those previous owners of that building, it has all come down to there is no signage, there is no one who knows that the building is there unless they're 100% specifically looking at it. Now, he's put a significant amount of money into the building of this, into renovating this, for the bottom half as a salon and suites business, and the top half as a separate entity as well, and having problems getting filled out. Only four out of 14 spots have been filled in the bottom half, and from the people that have come and asked about it, whether it be salons, whether it be other small businesses looking to get in there, tattoo artists, recording studios, the big question has been signage. How do we advertise our business on 53rd Street, which is a major thoroughfare? The location is great, but no one still knows that the building is there because there's nothing advertising on 53rd Street to show that that building is there. And again, that's talking with previous owners of the building, doctor's offices and whatnot. From the understanding of reading of the regulations, it is a multi-tenant building. Multi-tenant buildings should have access to signage on both of their lots. We are well over the 75 feet requirement from the other sign available on Elmore Street. And again, the signage that's going in is not going to block any current signage for the current businesses, so we're not going to be causing any hardship there. We're wanting to bring vitality to the area, we're wanting to bring business to the area, we're wanting to bring business to Davenport, which is going to bring tax dollars into Davenport, and we cannot bring that business, cannot bring that vitality, cannot bring that money in for the city if people aren't going to rent the building and drive business to the building. We can't drive the business, can't run out the building without the signage saying, "Hey, here we are, look at this great new space available, this great commercial sprays, the salon and suites," and not have anyone notice that it's there because there is no signage. So very important that this gets taken care of, so we can improve the area and bring in that tax money. Again, Enterprise and DXL has their own signage, it has been discussed with them. Companies aren't going to want to share their sign area. They're limited to the amount of sign space they can have. They don't want to lose any of their advertising space, so that has been discussed. Again, a multi-tenant frontage road on both sides, has frontage space on both sides, is looking for that signage for both sides. And again, if it was considered one lot, one entity, like a strip mall area, would be, there would be one big sign for everybody, as mentioned from the previous pictures. DXL has a sign, T-Mobile has a sign, AT&amp;T, Starbucks, Noodles, and the tax business share a sign there. T-Mobile has their own sign. This is the only building not allowed to have a sign on their frontage road and their frontage space where they're looking to have that. So it's really preventing that advertising to drive that business, to get the customers in where that business is needed, where, again, this is a failed building. Multiple tenants have not been able to be successful here because no one knows that they're back there. And again, like I said, that letter from the T-Mobile, from the owner of the T-Mobile building, that owner of that building is in Peoria, he has not been to the site, he just doesn't want a sign next to his property, is his big complaint there. It's not that it's blocking the T-Mobile's advertising sign, it's not that it's blocking the sign where his building is, because again, the sign for his building is actually going to be behind that tree up the way to the west off 53rd Street there. So again, you have to get well past where the proposed sign is before his sign is even visible. So there's nothing going to be interfering with the signage for that business, for that property, because that sign's already in place, and again, is not affected by the current sign, or for the proposed sign. I don't have any questions I can answer for.
I have a question. The sign off of Elmore, is that under your control or owned by OGAD?
That I do believe is the Diamond sign with OGAD from a previous business that has failed and is no longer in that building. So again, just another example.
But the owner has control of that sign?
Correct. But again, that is on Elmore, that is not on 53rd.
Right, right.
And the big drive in that area is going to be the 53rd Street sign. Again, if this was considered a zoning lot that had the multi-tenant sign, it would be one large sign for everybody in the lot, in the zoning area. So everyone else's business gets their own sign, how they would like it posted, this is the one, the one building, the one lot that is not getting to follow the same rules.
So communication with DXL or Enterprise regarding their sign, there was absolutely no...
Correct.
Discussion or negotiation with them to...
They were opposed from it from the start. They don't want to share their advertising space. And if I were a business owner, I, you know, I would feel the same way. I want to advertise my space, I want the biggest signs I can get for my business that's there, and I don't want to share that.
Do you have documentation from them saying they are not interested in changing their sign?
Again, the proposed sign is going to be a state-of-the-art sign, multi-tenant sign, again, standing total of around 23 feet tall, with the actual advertisement part of that sign at just under 12 feet off the ground. It's not going to be an eyesore, it's going to be aesthetically pleasing. They're going to be able to have a zone up top that's going to be able to, you know, state the date, state the temperature, state any weather warnings, they'll have that option if they're... Little over 35 square feet of an LED sign within the other multi-tenant, single-area signs located on top of that. So again, it's not like it's a terribly designed sign that's well thought out, well-planned to not interfere with the other businesses, but to be able to draw business to this building, which again, in the past, has failed over and over and over again because they do not have that signage, they do not have that way to advertise on 53rd Street.
I guess I have a question for staff. Regarding the sign, is, is the, per code, can the sign be larger than what is proposed?
So the sign height requirement maximum is 25 feet?
Okay.
And then it's allowed 100 square feet of sign base?
Okay. So it's pushing it? Yeah.
Correct. According on the schematics, we are looking at a total square footage of signage of 99.25 square feet.
Yeah, and just to reiterate, this sign isn't being part of your review, it's just the distance separation.
Right, right. I guess where I was going with this was regarding a partnership, I guess with some negotiations per the owners with DXL and Enterprise, but there could not be a larger sign if those two were combined, correct? I mean, the maximum is basically what is proposed from OGAD Properties.
That would be correct, under current code, that would be correct.
While we're asking staff questions, staff, remind me again, why, why wouldn't it be allowed, or why wouldn't there be a variance available to the petitioner to move the sign, put a sign up further west there on that?
Onto the 3150 property?
Yes.
So according, my zoning interpretation letter should have been attached to the packet, and that would be an option. The issue is that the signs are less than 75 feet apart, so they could come to an agreement to have an additional multi-tenant sign elsewhere within the zoning lot on that street frontage.
So they could put a sign, the proposed sign, towards the west side of the 3150 lot?
Technically speaking, if the property owner were to agree to that.
If I may interject here, the property owner in question for that is the owner of the T-Mobile lot. As I already said, he does not want the sign elevated at all. Moving the sign further westward would then have greater chance of interfering with the T-Mobile sign, which is unfortunately not located on there. May I approach the screen and show where that estimate where that T-Mobile sign actually is?
If that were the case, if they were to share a sign, then it would remove their freestanding sign. I think to note, while it's not blocking the T-Mobile sign, it would block the T-Mobile building's visibility.
From eastbound traffic?
From westbound traffic.
Hey Mike, this is Dan.
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
So that's, yeah, a couple lines of questioning. So I appreciate the fact that they need some advertising back there on 53rd Street. Those of adding a sign, which, you know, besides the clutter, which is why we have a distance between signs right for sign clutter, and I could see where DXL and Enterprise would want to, you know, add to the bottom of their sign. Like the two options, I wanted to see if the petitioner has considered is, since they're going to, they're proposing to build a new sign, could they, and have they discussed building a new sign like where DXL's current sign is, and adding DXL to that new sign with that 11 feet above ground where there's nothing, so it looks to be above the height of DXL sign anyhow? Or conversely, moving a sign over, like right in front of the T-Mobile building to get 70, whatever, 76 feet away from the DXL sign, put a new sign in order to entice T-Mobile, put T-Mobile's on that new sign, and then T-Mobile could remove their current sign, or put it where T-Mobile's current sign is? So joining forces with either DXL or T-Mobile on the new sign as a carrot to get one of them to allow us to be on the property? So I want to see if that's been considered.
Again, with that, with proposed sign size and restrictions on sign availability, being at that 100 square foot total signage, the sign proposed is right at that 100 square foot size. Again, the other businesses, as well as the proposed sign for those businesses being a multi-tenant sign, need to get multiple businesses on there with multiple suites in the bottom half of that building. Being able to advertise everyone's business in that restricted size, you're going to lose that advertising capability because no one's going to be able to read the name of the businesses and the signs that are on the sign. Because again, you're now looking at T-Mobile, you know, I'm not sure on the size of their sign, let's call it a 30 square foot sign, they're not going to be able to have 30 square feet of this sign for their one business, and we've got multiple businesses that need to go in onto the sign for the business, for the building that is there. And so the businesses are having a problem because again, they're not wanting to lose their advertising space to join in with another business that's trying to advertise as well. If an exception could be made, something along lines of, hey, build this new sign, and instead of only doing 100 square feet, maybe that bottom 12 feet of the base of that sign be able to advertise, you know, DXL and Enterprise on there. That could be an option I could see in the future, but at the same time, that's going to be filing a different hardship for a completely different reason, because now we're going over the 100 square feet of advertising space.
Yeah, I understand that, but it does reduce the sign clutter of an additional sign. Thanks for your explanation.
Yes, sir.
I have a question. You said there were 14 suites available? You said there were 14 suites available?
Correct, there are 14 suites and the Solana Suites on the bottom half of that building. And then the top half has not been built out at this time. But they're looking for multiple other tenants in the top half of the building as well.
So I guess my question would be, is if you have 14 different businesses inside that building, how are you going to get 14 different companies advertised on one sign?
So the signs are going to be digital signs that do have the pre-program set. It's going to advertise the sign for, you know, 30 seconds and scroll through to the different entities that are in there renting the suites.
Okay.
So, so then adding additional businesses such as T-Mobile or DXL Enterprise is just another name in the scroll, it wouldn't take more space, it would just take more time for them to cycle through?
Could take more time to cycle through, it does give less advertising time.
Yep.
But, yes.
Less, less, less from what is proposed, but more than what they currently have?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
At, at that time, though, we're also looking at the fair cost and being able to decide who's going to be, you know, paying for what part of the sign, if we're going to be adding in another business like T-Mobile or DXL and Enterprise, are they going to want to spend money on a new sign to have their business, again, advertised in rotation as compared to they have a sign already built, they don't have to spend more money on that is advertising their business permanently?
Right. I mean, you're, so again, if you're building the sign anyhow, so the cost is the cost. They add their name to it, it's just a, a program. And while they would be losing a permanent 100% visible sign, would they be gaining anything in, in your, in your GWIS newer high-tech sign? Is that a trade-off? I don't know, I would say it's their decision, but something else to consider. Okay. I have no more questions.
Thank you, Dan. Board, any further questions? Thank you.
Absolutely, I appreciate your time.
Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor of the request? Saying anyone? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak opposed to the request? Saying none? Any final comments? Yeah? Yeah, this, this is kind of protocol, somebody will, you know, gives you an opportunity to, to say any final comments.
Absolutely, I appreciate it. Again, the, the big thing here is, is definitely is a hardship for the property owner. Again, with trying to get tenants into that building. Again, we have four out of 14 suites filled at this time for the bottom half. Top half is not filled yet at this time. And again, the big push is going to be, there's no advertisement on that 53rd Street. And again, we look at the history of the location. It has failed business after failed business after failed business, doctor's offices and whatnots, and, and other businesses there. And again, it's coming down to, there's no advertisement. We weren't able to drive business because we don't have the advertisement on 53rd. Advertisement drives business, business, business drives tax revenue, tax revenue drives more business into the city. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Board discussion?
So in my sense here, you have a very convoluted lot. You have, you have a lot going on here. And there, there's going to be pain here no matter what, and, and there is pain here. And, you know, it seems like you can look at it from the standpoint of, okay, well, you, you know, you have the back building and, and you knew that, and so you're just going to take your beating, that's just how it goes. For example, let, let's amortize the pain a little bit. And, you know, if, if the front, the, the front building gets the advantage of, of being up front, and whether there's a sign there at the ingress point or not, but people are going to see that building. Granted, maybe a little later than, than in this case, T-Mobile would like, but nonetheless, they're going to see it as they're driving by. It just seems like there is some hardship here for the building at the back. And I'm, I'm just not so sure that the, the, the kind of sign they've proposed is, creates that much of a, an obstacle or blockage for T-Mobile and, and isn't actually the best happy medium solution that, that can be presented here. If, if you wanted to take the position of, hey, let's, let's try to be fair to everyone, let's try to amortize the pain.
Yeah, I, I somewhat agree with Jeff. However, I think there, there can be some, some negotiation, some partnership in trying to, I guess, put together a sign for, for all parties concerned in that area. There will be sign clutter, obviously. So I'm, I'm really torn. I think the biggest thing for me is that there's, you know, there's no acceptance of any of the criteria to provide a hardship other than the advertisement portion of it.
Vice Chair?
This is Dan. Go, go ahead, go ahead, Bridget.
I'm sorry, it's Laura. I'm not, I just wanted to touch base. I'm not sure if the question got answered about the diamond sign. And I wanted to make sure you were aware that it is on this petitioner's property.
Yeah, I even mentioned that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you got that.
Thank you.
So my thoughts, I mean, I'm concerned about sign clutter. I appreciate that they need to, I mean, they definitely need to advertise. But I would be more agreeable to a, a variance with a, a larger sign if it incorporated, you know, T-Mobile and/or DXL Enterprises and had one large sign at that entrance, and it was a little bit larger and included all three of those buildings. It'd be butt clutter, I think I'd be more agreeable to that variance than this one. But I, I, I get where they need to get some advertising out there. I don't know if I agree 53rd is the more prominent compared to Elmore. 53rd is extremely busy right there, and I don't know how many people are looking for signs as they are just getting to the intersection, where they would then see it off of Elmore. So yeah, I'm a little bit, I want to
So, so Doug?
Collaboration with the buildings?
So dovetailing on Dan's notion there, it would be incumbent on the, on the back building owners to come up with a, get creative and come up with, and negotiate with the surrounding neighbors, and maybe come up with that, that one sign that, that provides an effective solution for everyone. Don't know what the trigger would be there. Money is always kind of seems to be the, the crux of, of most things. But, you know, i, i, if, if you, you agreed with Dan's notion, that seems like that would be, you know, that, that would be the track that the, the petitioner would need to take, to, to try to get, try to pull together the neighborhood there, so to speak, and, and, and see if they could present a, a solution that is, is amenable to everybody.
And the downside of that is I know if we say no to the, there's a certain period of time, considerable piece of time before it can come back. Now they come back, they can come back with a different petition, and we can hear that if they could get one of those two or both of those other buildings to agree. If, if both of those building, own property owners say no, and they have that to, to demonstrate to the board, then that would make this petition even more agreeable. But, but upfront, in my opinion, I'd like to see some more work on trying to get what they want while staying closer to the city, existing city ordinance, which is our... That's, that's what's supposed to guide us, is existing ordinance. So if, if it failed talking to both the other buildings, and then this exact petition came back, and whatever it is, or six months or 12 months before they could re-present it, after both of those building property owners said no, then this would be more enticing to accept.
So the ordinance says that if, if an application is denied, it would be one year from denial, that they can bring it back unless there was a substantial change to the application, so.
But, but they could bring back a different one that combined with the other buildings, they could bring that back anytime, right?
Correct, yes. So if, if they came to an agreement with the other property owners and maybe they had a, a hardship variance request for a larger sign, that would be considered a different request?
Right, thank you. That's where I'm at.
Well, I, I, I have to agree with Dan that I think there can be some more, and as what Jeff alluded to, there could be some more negotiation in partnership with, with all the entities involved, I think, or at least attempt to.
And, and just to note, this exact same sign could replace the diamond sign on Elmore. There's nothing wrong with replacing that sign, that wouldn't be part of the issue.
Sure.
The, the issue's solely the distance.
Sure. Any other discussion? Okay, Dan, anything else?
Nope, I make a motion to approve the request. Sorry about the numbers in front of me, but...
Approve HV24-08?
Correct, that's my motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Rule call, please.
Blumker?
Aye.
Sorry, this, yes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Boyd Carlson?
No.
Darlin?
No.
Galliard?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you for your time. And I think as, as our discussion promoted, certainly, I guess we encouraged some kind of negotiation, partnership. And if there is a different request, correct me if I'm wrong, Laura, he can certainly bring that up to this board again if it's a different request.
Correct.
Or with the timeframe of one year to, to do it again.
Yes.
So I see no other business in front of us? Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.